Dear Father in Heaven, I thank you for this wonderful city of Canby that you've given us to live in. Ask for your anointing upon us tonight to govern, to lead. We thank you for your discernment, your vision, your direction, and your courage. And I ask for your protection over our city and all of those who dwell in it. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Communications this evening?
No, I have nothing.
Nothing, okay. First opportunity for citizen input this evening, your community announcements. Seeing no yellow cards or anyone rushing to talk to us, perfect, we'll move on. Mayor's business. There was no Clackamas County Coordinating Committee this month that was canceled because of our upcoming retreat here in August. Canby First Friday on the 7th was pretty lightly attended, I think just because of the holiday and multitude of people being out of town and taking extended time away. Attended the Region One Area Commission on Transportation meeting. We did have a pretty full agenda, which then pretty much changed after the release of the transportation bill. So we had a roomful of people hashing what little information we had out over that, and I will try to bring more to us at our next meeting as ODOT starts to kind of unpack what that bill's gonna mean. Some of the high points, if I can remember off the top of my head, there's just a lot of... So originally, the bill that was put forth was to try to... The projects that were in the bill were originally around eight and a half, $8.6 billion. What ended up being approved was $5.3 billion. The pinch points around the Rose Garden and then a stretch of 205 to 84 from Powell to 84 on I-205 are... Were projects that will get funding and then nothing. So the big argument amongst many of the mayors in Clackamas County is that Clackamas didn't get any funding. And so a number of the mayors and councils are somewhat up in arms about that. To pay for it, there's a lot of pieces to that in terms of added fees and things like that that are being looked at. Everything from bike... If you purchase a bike that's over $200 and 26 inches, there's a fee or tax that will be put on that. Gas tax that will increase over the next 10 years. There is discussion about if any additional lanes that do get added, that there will be a toll road piece to that. And there currently is a federal program that is being tested or is under trial in a couple of states, and there's room to add a state to it. And so our current legislature is looking at how do we become part of that test. And so when you look at... My understanding is when you can't toll an existing road or existing freeway, so you have to... It would have to be a completely new highway or whatever to be warranted of getting a toll on. So this pilot program that I think that's being implemented at the federal level and is being tested in a couple of states is that if you add a lane, then you can toll the lane. And so if it becomes a piece where it's maybe a high-speed lane that gets added or whatnot, then that would be a lane that could be fast-passed and told. So that's to be... Those are the pieces that ODOT will be looking at and some of the additional nuggets on that piece. So more... Oh, and yeah, I think, yeah, increasing vehicle registration fee and whatnot. I'm not sure based on that, because that's a conversation that Clackamas County is looking at doing, is increasing vehicle registration fee in Clackamas County specifically. So I'm not sure... Those are those pieces that need to be unpacked and figure out if that is occurring, how much will come back to Clackamas County in that regards, and then does that still warrant the Board of County Commissioners to look at doing something like that? So more to come on that. Council Parker and I had a great conversation tail end of last week, Greg, is that when we... With Representative from the county to discuss tourism and potential tie-ins to the Legacy Project as well as to the region. I think I had planned for us for an hour. I think we went almost two and a half hours having that conversation. Some really good conversation pieces coming onto that. And so it was talking about, you know, the Legacy Project at Willamette Falls, like how does that... What do we have historically going on, or what are the tourism pieces in our area? And then what are those regionally are we looking at? What, you know, what are potential impacts that we need to be looking at as well? And so Council Parker and I will... I definitely want to have more conversation about that and then have probably a greater conversation with us as a council about that, because I think we've got pieces to look at and in an effort of being proactive and staying ahead of that, what are those pieces that we need to be starting to move forward and toward? There's been a lot of questions out there and comments about Slice of Summer. Slice of Summer is not occurring this year. The group that normally organizes that, which is the Canby Music Boosters, kind of felt that they'd run their course and all their kids that they were supporting in the program have all moved on and graduated and are on to other things. They were having a harder time getting business sponsorships and the money to bring bands in over the last couple of years. And so my understanding is that as people have found out that we don't have Slice of Summer, that they're trying to reconvene and rally some troops to hopefully pick it back up for next summer. So I think watch Canby now on Facebook, or I'm sure one of us will catch wind of it and report on that going on. In a couple of weeks, I'll be attending the Oregon Mayors Association Conference in the thriving metropolis of Lebanon, Oregon. So I'm sure I'll bring some fun stuff back from that. Last night, attended the Park and Rec Advisory Board meeting. Couple of pieces on that that were... They did finalize the park maintenance recommendation, which will be coming to us as I've had conversation here this evening with Kim, our city recorder, and our city manager. So we'll be having a conversation on the August 2nd meeting about that. And then based on that, we'll determine what further steps or conversations we'll maybe take on the second meeting in August. So but we do have a full recommendation from the advisory board on that piece. They discussed the Canby Dog Park, and if that were to come to fruition, how would that... How can maintenance for that be supported? And they've got the organization Sparks of Hope has stepped forward and offered to help with some of those maintenance pieces and using that as a piece for their organization as well as the kids that they support. So that was a big piece as well. So there was quite a bit of dialogue about that, but that's... They're gonna work that out. There was some conversation about, Rick, about some of the safety concerns down at Community Park during the summer, just increased activity and whatnot, and that there's been, you know, some, I guess, some challenges and things that have gone on down there. So I don't know if there's been conversation with chief or if there's been anything brought forth in that regards.
They haven't been communicated to me, so I'll reach out to the chief and see what information he has. And I assume that Matilda was at last night's meeting?
Yes, she was.
And I can get details from her as well.
Okay, great, thank you. Other pieces of conversation was conversation about Canby Area Park and Rec District, which we also had a meeting about that this evening as well. And finally, there's an open seat on the Parks... The Canby Park and Recreation Advisory Board. So if anyone has an interest in being on the Park and Rec Advisory Board, please see our city recorder, get an application. So...
Is it open right now?
It is currently open, yes. Like, it just came open, somebody just recently resigned from...
It was pulled out, so...
So I literally think it was like within... Recently.
There was new information last night.
Yeah, it was hot off the presses last night, Kim. That's the only reason I know, because usually Kim knows everything before any of us do. See if I'm leaving anything out. I think that pretty much covers Park and Rec. Some upcoming things, we have Rotary Three on Three, Nothing But Net Tournament. Their basketball tournament's coming up here on July 29th. On August 19th and 20th, we have the Junk Refunk going on. The Clackamas County Fair is going on August 15th through the 19th?
Sounds right.
Is that correct?
15th through 19th.
Mr. Grange Captain?
Yes, sounds right.
Thank you.
Sounds right.
On August 25th is Canby's Big Night Out, which... So stay tuned on that. I think we've got some great things, music, and block off all of downtown for that. And then that whole weekend is Canby's Big Weekend. So mark it on your calendars. Dalia Farm opens up and there's, yeah, a car show and everything. It's Canby's Big Weekend. And I... There was something else. Oh, attended the Canby Area Chamber of Commerce Board meeting yesterday, and there was lots of conversation about downtown and, you know, what in their opinion needs to be done. And I filled them in on all of the fun things that we are doing and conversations that we have had. And so I think it's a... And then they had a big tourism conversation. So I think maybe one of those things in the near future, we'll queue it up amongst everything else that we have, that might be an interesting joint meeting to do with us and the Chamber of Commerce in terms of discussing economic development and tourism, since that's a piece that they... They're involved in. But it was just a lot of... Again, it was things on what businesses are we drawing downtown? There was questions about the facade improvement program and, you know, are we being, you know, strong... You know, are we not having strong enough language to force some of these businesses to make improvements? Are we, you know, are we out recruiting specific businesses that we want in our downtown or just in Canby in general? So again, I tried to inform them that, you know, we... I laid out some of the pieces about our facade improvement program, the things that we are doing in regards to that, and how much we've budgeted for that for this upcoming year. I also addressed the recruiting aspect and our... I think it's my opinion being a good policy that for us to necessarily pick and choose what businesses come in and don't come in is... Gets into an interesting bit of a quagmire, I think, for us as a council. I think that... But, you know, so we've just had a very interesting dialogue regarding those pieces. So I'll work with Rick and Mallory and see where our agenda... Based on what we're queuing up for the agenda, it could be January before we do that, but we'll get it in there. So that's all that I have this evening for that, and we'll move into the council reports. Councilor Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Planning Commission did meet on Monday, and I listened to the audio of it, I guess it was. There was no TV and there was no... No, I listened to the recording. The audio was the microphones weren't working and the TV wasn't working, so it was very faint and difficult to listen to. It was one of the ones I didn't go to. But I do know what happened. And so they had two public hearings. One was a land partition and subdivision request. One single piece of lot, it was 1.65 acres, and was split into contain the existing house and then eight more houses on one of the parcels, on one of the newly created parcels. That was basically an infill project. And then the other one was to change the space usage of buildings. I don't know the exact details of it, but it changed the space usage to allow units of different smaller sizes in that spacing, and that was approved unanimously by the Planning Commission. Both were relatively controversial, there weren't any... There was one resident there that was, I think, speaking out about the first application of the eight-house subdivision, but there wasn't a whole lot of public input on them. Went through... Both went through unanimously.
The second one there, Counselor, the... I mean, you're talking about... Are we talking about smaller plotted lands? I mean, like, we... I mean, we're pretty much...
Isn't industrial use... They were smaller use... It was the 1,500 to 6,000 square foot usage for industrial uses, and that was needed to be a site and design review for that to approve that smaller use.
But wasn't it a residential thing? It was more of an industrial park piece?
Yeah, that's what I could tell on the audio. Again, it was... I apologize, because I wasn't there on that one, but you were literally listening. It would be like someone's talking over there and the microphone was over here, because it was really faint. I don't know why. Kim? I got the technical guys probably fixed it.
Yeah, there was something that was broken.
Yeah, we had something broken in the broadcast booth, and that equipment has been ordered, replaced, and we should be on the air today. And thank you for CTV5 for working with us to help make that happen.
You guys did actually do a good job of it. You could sort of hear it. I mean, it was tough, but you made it work.
All right. Anything else, sir?
Nope.
Thank you.
All right. Oh, I was gonna mention the Rotary Three on Three, but since you mentioned it, I'll just say you can come root for your favorite city counselor in the tournament, because I'll be playing.
Oh.
In the Over 40 League.
In the Over 40 League.
Your favorite city counselor. I was like, I didn't think Counselor Dale was...
That's a challenge.
I wasn't sure if it was a challenge or if we all just automatically went, like, our egos got in the way. I don't have a team either.
I'm not playing.
Yeah. We'll put a team together.
It only takes three of us, so...
Well, yeah, and a defibrillator first. That's good.
Okay.
Right. Council Parker?
Well, hi, how are you? I think that's a great idea about getting together with the chamber and having a facilitated work session, because in the two and a half hours that the mayor and I spent with this consultant who was hired by the Willamette Falls Legacy Project to try and contextualize the impacts and potential opportunities of the different communities, it was actually, you know, we should have paid him for walking us through some things. And for me, you know, I'll say it, that tourism is a two-sided sword in Canby. Without a sales tax, a lot of tourism only has a detriment to our city. There are things where the roads are used, services are used, and there is no capture by even local retailers. So other than the fact that you would have gas being purchased, which is a local tax, and then perhaps... I don't know if our liquor store also returns directly here.
It does.
But we... I do think that we need to have a serious conversation, a heads-up conversation, about what types of tourism actually help us and what the return on investment is, because there are some things... Certainly if we had a hotel, Counselor Dale, if we had a hotel, we would be able to have a transient room tax, which could be used for events and other things. But I think that... I think that a lot of people just assume that all tourism is good for all things. And I remember when I was staff at the city of Gresham, Nike came to us and wanted us to host the World Games. Senior World Games, because we had the Mount Hood Community College Swimming Pool and some other areas. And we said, "Well, okay, it's five days. We'll have police overtime, that's $50,000. Will you give us $50,000?" And they go, "No, no, that's your contribution, but you get the benefit of all these people coming to your city." And I said, "Well, how is that a benefit? Well, they'll be shopping and that type of thing." But we said, "No." We said that this is going to put us $50,000 in the hole, and we didn't do it. Now, some people may intuitively feel that tourism is good in all cases, but I'd like to have that conversation, especially with the chamber, because it would be nice to advance that conversation to the point of where is it actionable and what are we supposed to be doing? Done with that rant. Downtown, hey, yay for... Using Counselor Height's term, yay for the Clackamas Community Credit Union painting their old building. They're gonna be using that, as I understand it, in an administrative role, back office type of things. So that'll be another dozen people downtown consuming goods. But thank you for getting that building painted, looks much better. I was able to attend the Chamber Forum on the 11th with school during the year. I'm not able to, so I was able to see what everybody looks like, and that was kind of fun. On the 15th, I attended Bridging Cultures, and they got me onstage for another short talk in Spanish welcoming people. And it was so cute, after I got through giving my talk in Spanish, the translator, who had been translating English to Spanish, translated my remarks into English. And it was what I had intended, so...
Well, that's good. Nice. That's good.
So that worked out well. And then we mentioned Three on Three, and then, of course, the Clackamas County Fair Board met on Thursday, July 13th. And of course, we're all looking forward to the start of the fair, which would be on the 15th. And that's it, Your Honor.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Hensley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And summer months are kind of slow, so I don't really have any liaison meetings, but I did meet with Kathy Robinson from the Adult Center just to kind of catch up on things. And she also said that things are a little slow down there. But she made a comment that I thought needed to get passed on. She really kind of wanted to give a shout-out. Our Public Works employee Shane Huster has been taking over the role for facilities since Don had retired, and he's doing a fantastic job. She's very impressed and kind of wanted to give kudos to Shane. So I don't know if he's watching, or maybe Rick can pass that along? That'd be great. And also on the Adult Center front, I wanted to let everyone know that the food services manager, Suzie Boss, who incidentally is an auxiliary member and cooks the breakfast for you guys, she makes the gravy, is retiring after 30 years at the Adult Center. So on August the 4th, from 3:30 to 5:30, there's a little send-off for her, and I wanted to pass that along, so that the community members that have enjoyed her food services, then they can come in and wish her a fond farewell on her retirement.
It was August 4th?
August 4th, it's a Friday, from 3:30 to 5:30 at the Adult Center. And that is all I have.
Great. Thank you.
Sure.
Council President Dale?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I was able to, on the July 1st occasion, briefly visit the Bridging Cultures picnic. I provided no entertainment, and my Spanish was not tested. They are very smart people there, but always, always great to get to reconnect and enjoy some really good food. Speaking of food, I made purely for educational purposes and to see how other cities do it, I visited the Happy Valley Food Court Center purely for educational, and I do appreciate...
I appreciate you doing that, thanks.
I do appreciate the patience of Counselor Parker and Mayor Hodson putting up with my text as I got really kind of crazy about how cool an operation that is. So exciting to look forward to maybe down the road for us, but...
And no public funds were used in this research?
And no public funds were used in this research at all. Man, my girls can eat. Wow.
I'm sure they're gonna be appreciating.
So I'm just... Okay, Roxy's when you open, I'm just warning you. The Dale girls are on their way for Hawaiian food, so...
A lot of people are.
That's what they were all about at the Food Court. On the Canby Utility Board front, for those of you that experienced the water main break between Oak and Pine on the north side on 13th, that was due to an old steel pipe that had just rusted through, and they've repaired it temporarily by putting a sleeve around it, but be assured, Canby Utility has moved that up to this fiscal year's capital repair. So that'll be taken care of permanently. On the flip side, it's gonna dig into the street for a while, so just be prepared for that. The quarterly reports on power quality are out, and yet again, Canby Utility greatly surpassed the industry standards, especially if you take out the big PGE outage, which was out of our control. We have some of the most reliable power in the country right here in Canby. Over the past year, here's an interesting figure reflecting growth. Over the past 12 months, Canby Utility has added 170 electric customers. So that's just... That's a mix of residential and commercial, but that's just a testimony to the growth that our town is going through.
For what time period?
The last 12 months. Yeah. It would actually be June through June. The new electric rate hearing is coming up in October. So far, the news from BPA looks good, that we'll have a very modest increase that'll take effect in November. As you know, I've shared in the past, Canby Utility is working on constructing a new headquarters at Fourth and Pine on the south side. They were delighted to have seven general contractors attend their pre-construction meeting. I don't have a lot of experience in that, but I know we've been real happy when we get six or seven, so they're looking forward to some good competitive bids there. They're anticipating that the project will slide three weeks. Clackamas County Building Department is so busy that even Canby Utility's not immune to delays on getting things through them. Let's see, and one last thing, which you should not notice anything about except in your rate bill, is Canby Utility's switching to a new after-hours answering service. This one is much better qualified at diagnosing problems, so the upshot of it is they won't send out a repair crew in the middle of the night just because you called on anything. They'll talk with you about it, see if they can figure it out, see what your urgency is. So that is anticipated to be a pretty significant savings to ratepayers. And the other good news is that call center is located here in the metro area, and the last one was across the country, so it's kind of nice to have local folks there. And that concludes, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Height?
Hello. So let me start with Canby Independence Day, because we haven't met since then. So now Counselor Spoon will have to start the countdown. 300 and... No, just kidding. It was fun. I think most of us were there. And the... I wanted to say thank you to Jamie of Canby Main Street and all those great volunteers that came out and their smiling faces, troubleshooting, standing out in the heat. It was a great event. The parade was fun. I think almost all of us participated, yeah. The Canby Historical Society, I didn't serve pancakes, but I heard that they made as much money as they typically do, even though there weren't as many... Or their hours were kind of limited in a way? You know how the parade conflicts with their service hours? But they did well, so they were pleased with that. The car show moved. Anyway, there's a lot of good Facebook feedback and advice that we've gotten, and so we'll just continue to improve, I think, so rah rah. With the library, our director Irene Green said at the last meeting that her goal was to increase our registered cardholders to 12,000 by the end of the last fiscal year, the end of June. She almost achieved that with 11,933. So she was close. No cigar, but yeah, great job there. But there has been an increase for sure since we've moved into this building. She also got to boast that we have the highest circulation rate in the county at this point, so go Canby, yeah. So we're doing well there. Teen programming is on the increase. In fact, just tonight at 6 o'clock, there was a Make It Night duct tape, I think, was on the order, and I know some of our children were actually there while we were in the meeting tonight with the work session, so that's exciting. The computer stations are basically always full now, so thanks again to Canby Tel for donating those several months ago. But we're almost thinking of maybe having to have patrons sign up in advance now, like, well, there's, you know, there's a line now, so what do we do to manage that? It's a good problem to have, but the computers are being well-used. There's new signage now above the children's area, thanks Canby Kiwanis in a big way. It's very bright and colorful, and I think, I haven't talked to them directly, but I'm sure the Kiwanis are quite proud of that. It's, in my opinion, it looks great. Yeah, so good job getting that done, city of Canby. You know, the programming is still very popular and robust, and they're... I say this almost every month, they're almost breaking out of their meeting space, but they're trying to figure out how to do that when there's so many patrons that come listen to these shows and concerts and talks and whatnot. So how to manage all the people that want to watch the events? Another good problem to have. The summer reading program is coming to an end kind of soon. End of August is when you'll turn in your reading cards, adults, kids, teens, et cetera. And the last big kids event is August 4th. That's the Reptile Man. He always ends the season, like 100 kids show up, they have a great time. So yeah, it's already ending. I have a question for Mr. Mayor, actually, and this one. You know how we all have neighborhood association liaisonships? Well, at least four or five of us do. I haven't... I'm trying to meet with my contact person and kind of see where we're at, but let us know if there's an expectation for that liaisonship. I'd kind of like to know if there's a direction, if we have a goal. That might be something, like, maybe send us an email or bring it up at the next council meeting? Like, I would like to see you guys go here, you know, by the end of the year. I'd like to have a goal to work towards, because otherwise I'm not quite sure what I'm being tasked with. Does that sound good?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. And then other things, yeah, fill the boot. I think somebody already maybe reiterated that, but that's coming up July 29th, 99E between Holly and Ivy. It's for the Muscular Dystrophy Association. The fire department will be out there with their boots, so wanted to give a little reminder of that. And then, you know, to the issue of Slice of Summer not being in And then, you know, to the issue of Slice of Summer not being in existence, I'll say that at least the city of Aurora still has their summer concert series, so our citizens can just go up the road. I think that's on Wednesday nights. So we can get music that way. Wanted to say that. And then lastly, I was wondering if I can coach Rick to give us an update on the Dahlia Project before the end of this meeting? Does that sound good, Rick? Oh, goodie. Okay. Thank you. That's all I've got.
Great question, Ms. Mayor. A question. This kind of goes along with the reason. How many of the neighborhood associations actually meet? I know mine doesn't. The people that are signed up for it.
Not regularly.
One a year. I think they have one.
Yours does, like once a year?
About once a year.
Yeah, it'd be good to have information about how, because they're kind of independent, I think. I think Matilda Dees knows the most about that program, I think. You know, like how they're, how we work with them and whatnot. It would be good to have a little history.
I reached out to ours in my neighborhood and nobody's even gotten back to me. I don't think they are even actually doing their old rules anymore. They're probably names on an old list.
Strangely, I have an update about the neighborhood association in my area.
All right.
No, the south, where am I? Southwest Canby Neighborhood Association is in the process of scheduling a meeting for probably sometime in August. I mean, we have to make meeting announcement time periods and everything, so anyway, they haven't confirmed a date yet because they, I think they were aiming for Fair Week and that's just a rough one. So if you are in southwest Canby, there is a Southwest Canby Neighborhood Association Facebook page. Our head of our, or president of our neighborhood association is Jackie Jones and she's on Facebook too. Reach out to her or like the page or join the page or however pages and groups work these days and pay attention because I think one's coming shortly. So I don't know what's on the agenda, but it's coming. A meeting. Also, in conjunction with, with what Tracy said, I wanted to give a huge shout out to Jamie and all of the volunteers for the 4th of July. It's really extraordinary how the, the event kind of was given to the city just a year and a half ago. And last year, she did a great job and then she learned and this year was even better and ran so smooth and volunteers really stepped up and put in long hours. And it's such, I think, a special part of our community and really plays to the livability and our community culture and I'm really happy that it's going strong and that it gets a little bit better every year.
Kudos to the band. The band was quite, the first band was quite good.
I heard they were outstanding. I heard they were outstanding.
Eleven o'clock in the morning.
Did you see that mayor on drums? Exceptional work.
Tibreen, Tibreen lady.
Yeah. Yeah. No, that was a good time. It was a lot, it was a lot of fun actually to, to be on that side of it. I think at the very least, people found us amusing, which I guess was the goal, entertainment. The next Bridging Cultures picnic, I believe, is on the 29th, so that's always a good time. If you guys don't have anything scheduled that day, please join us. And then also, I'm not really associated with the city specifically, but I also wanted to give a huge shout out to Joan Monin and all the work she does to bring Hair Fest to the town. It was here last weekend. Just thousands of people coming to our community and spending money. I got stuck behind one of them that ordered 16 Frappuccinos on Sunday morning in the drive-thru. It's really a go-inside kind of order if you're paying attention, but, but just, you could just see all of the mon, all of the money kind of moving around town and people coming in and I think our citizens were so patient and friendly. They get better at producing it every year. This year, they had RVs come in on Thursday night, so it didn't hold up all of Friday morning's traffic, so they're finding ways to make it run more smoothly from the citizen end. Also really neat, they sold actually more tickets for Friday night this year than they did for Saturday night. And in the past, Friday night has never come in within 500 tickets of Saturday night. So they did a really good job building the bill so that people were coming into town for two days instead of just one day. And just so many people coming to the area and spending money. And I ran into a number of people at lunch or on the various days in town saying they were in town for Hair Fest and enjoying our local restaurant, so it's a great event that she puts on and it brings so many people to our town. So I know it's a lot of work and I just wanted to thank her for continuing to put in the work and the hours to make happen.
They ended up having 100, 114, 115 more campers this year than they did last year. And so it was just, yeah, I, we got to sling beer tokens at the, on Saturday night and it was, it was packed. I stayed till the bitter end.
It's packed.
And there's still probably 150, 200 people there still taking in the music in the evening, so.
Yeah, and you know, Joan really works with local businesses. Ebner's was there selling food, the Canby Human Bean was there doing coffee, so really passing some of the, the opportunity around to local businesses. Jason Feldman, who's her production partner, gave a backstage tour before on Thursday or on Friday and Joan let us go since my husband is a musician. And it was really interesting that he's, neither of them had ever done anything with camping. And so for them to be able to support that many, you know, campers, it's not in either of their wheelhouse. I just, I'm super impressed with what they're doing. Yeah. Not really associated with the city, but just really good for our town, so.
I just hope it doesn't get too big and they have to move it elsewhere.
No, there's still room there. They expanded the area quite a bit this year. Then there's still room to grow there and yeah, there is. I'm just hoping next year the Beastie Boys band goes on earlier because I'm a little too old to stay in that late. But they were fantastic.
Excellent. Thank you. All right. We will move into the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I move to pass the consent agenda, which consists only of the approval of the minutes of the June 21st, 2017 City Council regular meeting.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
Motion's been made by Council President Dale and seconded by Counselor Spoon to approve the consent agenda, which includes the minutes of the June 21st, 2017 City Council regular meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
No, Stan. I wasn't at that meeting.
Passes 5-0 with a 1 abstention. We'll move into resolutions and ordinances. Kim?
The first item we have is Resolution 1271. This is accepting a corrective action plan as a result of an audit finding for the fiscal year 2015-2016.
Great. Thank you, Kim.
Good evening. So what you have before you tonight? When we did our audit for fiscal year 1516, one of the things that came out was that the rate we were using for reimbursement on some of, on one of our federal grants, we were using, for fleet charges, we were using a flat $75 an hour rate. That's what they charge internally for work between departments. And for federal grants, we have to charge actuals. So that was our finding. We corrected that. This year, we're fully in compliance. We did not receive more money than we should have. We just received it sooner than we should have because we only requested grant reimbursements for the first two quarters of that year because we completed the grant. If we had done it at actuals, it just would have drawn out into probably the third or fourth quarter, but we still would have received the same amount of money. It was just the timing. So because of that, ODOT is requiring that we have an action plan, which we did. We did that right when the audit came out. That should be in your packet. And we created a policy for calculating the rates for federal grant reimbursements. And what we need from you tonight is to say that you saw the corrective action plan and the policy and you approve of it and that's how we move forward.
And the, the significant difference between the $75 an hour that we would typically charge and what the feds allow us to charge is the, is the overhead component. As, as all of you know, because you're engaged in business in one form or another, you can't conduct a business with just an employee. You have to have a roof over their head and they have to have tools and equipment and they use electricity and, and all of those are not allowable costs under this federal grant. So we have to back off those costs and only capture the actual salaries and benefits associated with the employee doing the work and not allowed to charge the overhead charges.
Interesting piece to have come up. I had not heard of this before.
Yeah, we were a little, obviously, we were a little surprised since we did receive an audit finding, but Julie did a great job of turning around a solution in a very quick time period. She worked closely with Julie Huiling and, and with our fleet maintenance crew to, to develop a resolution for it. It's a little bit disappointing because, you know, obviously, the cost of doing business does include the roof that we put over our heads and all of the tools and equipment that we use to complete the projects. However, in this particular context, with this particular federal grant, we're not allowed to charge those extra costs.
Guidelines for federal grants is only 98 pages long.
Shocking. Only 98?
Only.
Who's counting?
Give it a little time. I'm sure we'll crest the 100. No problem.
Please, no.
Questions or comments on, on this piece?
No, makes sense.
All good. Okay.
I'm, oh, are you looking? Yeah, okay. I move to adopt Resolution 1271, a resolution accepting a correction, corrective action plan as a result of an audit finding for the fiscal year 2015-2016.
Second.
A motion's been made by Counselor Spoon and seconded by Counselor Height to approve Resolution 1271, accepting a corrective action plan as a result of an audit finding for the fiscal year 2015-16. Any further discussion? No? I will make a comment. Thank you for the quick.
Yes.
Action on correcting that. I know that that's something our, our, we'll say bookkeeping for right now for lack of a better term, but just all of our financial bookkeeping that we have done as a city. We've been recognized for the job that we do for a number of years and I know when something like this occurs, it's, it's always resulted in a quick action from us and have not been, this is the first one, I think, that I've heard of and I've been on the council now for almost 10 years. And so I appreciate the quick reaction in getting this corrected and, and putting in a plan that this doesn't occur again. So thank you for that piece.
Yes, thank you.
So motions on the table. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Carrie, 6-0. Thank you.
The next item we have is Resolution 1272. This is amending the policy for reduced sewer rate eligibility.
And this is one of the projects I've been wanting to work on since I got here 11 months ago. It's almost been a year. I know. So our ability to help citizens who have serious financial constraints. We currently have a policy in place that allows for a reduced sewer rate for citizens who are over 65 or permanently disabled that meet an extremely low income level. And what we're finding, we only have about 50, 60 customers who actually, that we know of, that qualify for this program. And what we're finding is that we'll have people call and they'll be within $100, $200 of the income limit. And.
Speaking to the mic.
Sorry. So what we did was I wanted to try to increase the number of people we could serve and help. So we looked at changing the criteria. So what we use currently is we use the Clackamas County very, or no, extremely low income limit for judging whether or not someone could qualify for this program. Currently, for one person in a household, that annual income cannot exceed $15,700, which is not much. So Rick and I talked about this and we felt that doing an average between the extremely low and the very low would be more appropriate. It comes out to about a minimum wage position and we think that that will maybe help some more people who just, just fall under or don't quite make it. I don't know how many people this might help because we don't have people's income levels, but I do know we've had several recently that just were a hair over what the $15,700 is. So our recommendation is to change the variable we use and do an average of the extremely low and the very low income limit. The other thing I did was I updated language in here regarding how we tell what the household income is. What was in the language before was kind of vague and it was hard to administer, so I've changed it to be adjusted gross income as reported to the IRS. That's a number on a tax form, really easy to tell. So those are the updates that we're recommending.
And then, as this program indicates, it's for low-income senior and low-income permanently disabled citizens in the city.
It essentially have to be somebody that doesn't qualify for social security if it's $15,000 something.
It would be fairly low, be very low. We were trying to find a way to not, to make it possible for people that have a true desire to pay but simply don't have the financial wherewithal to, to, to be able to participate. We know that there is some cost associated with this, but we also think that some persons who aren't paying simply because they can't pay anything, they have to choose between eating and, and paying, will be able to pay a lower rate and so will fall into compliance who perhaps previously haven't been able to. It's, it's not a lot, but, but we felt it was a step in the right direction and it really addresses some of the most vulnerable population in our community.
Again, what would be the new dollar amount?
The dollar amount stays the same. It's just too, how many people? Oh, you mean the income limit?
Yes, sorry. What's the, the new income limit?
For a one-person family, it'd be $20,925. Now, these numbers are updated annually each, at the beginning of each fiscal year. Clackamas County updated these. When I went back and looked at the changes, they are minuscule from year to year.
Sure.
Not even $100 from year to year, so.
Yeah, so the single would go from the equivalent of $15,700, which is the extremely low, to the average of the very low and extremely low. So it'd go from 15 to 20 in this context. And it's, it's household income and not individual income, so it's the income of all persons living at a specific address.
How would these ratepayers know that this change has been implemented? Because we're not gonna, are we gonna broadcast it? I'm curious how that gets communicated. Can you hear me?
No, I'm just saying that they're here.
Oh, oh, I see if they happen to be listening right now. Okay.
And that's, that's another area that I wrestled with because we don't advertise it. We don't really put it out there. If we have a customer call, you know, we will ask questions to see if they qualify, but it's not something that I can tell has ever actually been marketed here.
Yeah, we do file the information. I file the information each year with Clackamas County. They have a senior and disabled agency and we update this information with them each year and indicate that we do have a, a, an assistance program for persons that are low and very low income and meet the definition for this program. And that's something that's updated on an annual basis.
It is.
Yeah.
Would it be appropriate once a year or something to make a note on the bill that goes out so that people would be aware that it exists if they need it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that doesn't create a problem.
This is just the first step. I have a master plan to get assistance for our citizens. We don't really have a lot of programs to help, so this is the first step. I've got other ideas of reaching out to organizations.
We can. We have at times for, for different things.
Doesn't necessarily fit this criteria.
It's a step in the right direction, I think. This is great outreach. Thank you for finding this program, yeah.
I think it's appropriate to reassess on a semi-regular basis whether or not the numbers make sense, so. Good action.
Yeah, we'll definitely kind of keep track and see if we have a huge influx of people who now qualify. It's just hard to tell.
Very good.
I do want to thank Julie for bringing this forward. I think this is a, is a really valuable change.
Motion, though, if we're ready. Yeah. I move that we adopt Resolution 1272, amending the policy for reduced sewer rate eligibility.
Motion's been made by Council Height and second by Council Spoon to approve Resolution 1272, amending the policy for reduced sewer rate eligibility. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Thanks, Julie.
Thank you, Julie.
The next item we have is Ordinance 1462. This is authorizing an amended contract with Kin Technology, Inc. to continue to provide computer technical services for the city and declaring an emergency.
Yes, we are declaring, asking that you authorize us to declare an emergency. Kin Tech is, is our currently, current provider of IT services. And we wish to get this contract in place and enforced as quickly as possible after the fiscal year budget has been approved. We did solicit quotes. We received three quotes for this service. Kin Tech has been our IT provider since 2006 and has done a very good job for us. I need to particularly compliment them on the work that they did in their transition from our several buildings that we occupied before last October into this building that we're currently in. Did a wonderful job. As indicated, we have, did solicit and receive three quotes. The hourly rate on each of the three quotes was, Kin Tech was the lowest of the three quotes that we received. This is, the contract is a base contract not to exceed $100,000. It establishes the hourly rates for the services to be provided if the certain services are outside of those that are covered within the contract itself. So we have both the not to exceed for the basic core services that are identified within the contract and then the additional services based on an hourly rate. We're very happy with the service that Kin Tech has provided to us.
Really do a great job.
So we just have two employees from, currently. Is that right?
We, we do. We have two employees and then they bring in others as necessary to where we have a larger project or where we have special needs or, and they, and they do it even within the scope of the contract itself when it's necessary to do so. So if we have something that's really pressing, they need more than two staff, they'll bring in a third person or however many they need to accomplish the task. If we have a specialty need, they'll, they may bring in outside person and we'll get billed the hourly rate if it's outside the scope of the contract services that are defined within our base rate.
But our administrative assistant is on our city payroll.
Yes, we do have a single staff person who is on, that would be Val, who is on city payroll, who kind of coordinates with and collaborates with all of the departments and with Kin Tech tech staff to make sure that all of our needs are met. And she also does an exceptional job.
I move we adopt ordinance number 1462, an ordinance authorizing the city of Canby to enter into an amended contract with Kin Technology Incorporated to continue to provide computer technical services for the city and declaring an emergency. Second.
The motion's been made by Council Hensley and second by Council Height to approve ordinance number 1462, an ordinance authorizing the city of Canby to enter into an amended contract with Kin Technology, Inc. to continue to provide computer technical services for the city and declaring an emergency. Any further discussion?
It is a good deal.
Thank you.
Thanks for that.
I was hoping you would weigh in on that.
Yeah. For the amount of sites that we have, the tech we have, the number of FTEs and the number of units, it's a ripping good deal.
The official geek analysis.
The official geek analysis is ripping good deal.
Well, and the owners of the company live here in town and they're very invested in Canby. And so I know that they, and they have done
They take care of us.
a great job. So yes, thank you for the analysis.
There you go. In-depth.
Yes. Thank you. Okay. There's no other comment? Any, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes six, zero. We have no new business right now. Moving into city administrator business and staff reports.
Yes, I too want to recognize and commend Jamie Stickle, city staff, councilors, mayor, and all those, and all those persons within the community that volunteer their time to make our Canby Independence Day celebration such a great success. This is actually the first year that I've been able to participate in. It was just a wonderful time. Really, really enjoyed it. So thank you, Jamie, for, for what you've done. The, the Dahlia project is moving along very well. You will notice, I hope by now, that the buildings are gone and that the, that what used to be basement underneath the old finance building is no longer, that the land has been leveled and staked and the excavation for the footings for the building are now beginning to go in. We have tentatively set the second week of August for some type of groundbreaking. We're still working with the developer on what to call it and how to conduct it. But it's likely to happen on the, I picked one date and it didn't work because we have a city function on that date. On the 10th of August, which is a Thursday, but we have to coordinate with the, the developer. Originally, we'd selected the 9th, but that conflicted with the citywide activity we have. So looking at the 10th of August as a tentative date, it has not set in stone yet. But as soon as we're able to do that, I will let you know. And hopefully, most or all of you will be in town and be available to participate. It should be a fun time. It's difficult to call it a groundbreaking because we may actually be pouring concrete then. But, so we were debating between calling it a groundbreaking, a ribbon cutting, a ground cutting, or a ribbon breaking. We just didn't know what to call. So we're still working on, on the detail. But the, the idea is to, to celebrate a, kind of a historic time for the city of Canby and to recognize and, and salute those persons in the community and most particularly all the people sitting up here on the dais this evening for support and of this project, which I think is just going to be a game changer for the downtown business community.
The stem cutting, the stem cutting ceremony.
There you go. That's nice. That's great.
I, I like that. I think that I will run that by the developer. That's very, very creative.
Instead of a shovel, we have our snippers.
Oh, I do also need to report that I have been in ongoing dialogue with the county in kind of an ongoing lightweight negotiation to see if we have an ability to take into the city system our first county road. South First Street from 13th, southward to the city, the city line is, for the most part, a well-maintained street that has, for the most part, sidewalks on both sides or at least on one side. And the side that's not, doesn't have a sidewalk is slated for improvements, which will add sidewalks. So it might be a perfect opportunity to, to explore and, and take our, you know, dip our toes, if you will, into the, the taking of property. We're still talking about the extent to which the, the, the road transfer would, the distance that it would cover. There's a portion of city, of the street within the city limit that's actually a gravel road. And so I will be working with Jerry and Elzine to see what, what kind of problems that creates. If, if we have that, that will be, some people on North Pine might disagree with this, but that will be the only gravel road that we have in, in the city. It's only a couple hundred feet, but it's still, there's a principal element associated with this. So we're working with the city, with the county and the objective is to start a process that we can continue year to year until, over a period of time, we're able to address all of the county roads, bring them into the street system, bringing them, bring them up to a city standard and, and put them under our maintenance umbrella. And that's all we have.
Second opportunity for citizen input. And there is no one? Action review.
You have approved the consent agenda. You've adopted Resolution 1271 and 1272. And you've approved ordinance 1462 to come up for second reading on August 2nd.
Joe, do we have an exec session tonight?
We do not.
Joe's lone speaking part this evening. Well, great. No exec session. Thank you everyone for your time. I will take a motion to adjourn.
Is that moved?
It has been moved. Is there a second to adjourn?
Second.
Say, die, we want a second. Wants to stay. All right. The motion's been made by Council Hensley, second by Council Height to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. That passes six, zero. Good night, Canby. Thank you very much. Enjoy your summer.
I think they are enjoying your summer.